No, I hear nothing. I have no sound on Zoom. So I'll just call into Zoom on the phone number and just do it on the phone. That should work okay. Okay. Let me try that in a minute. I'll do that in the next minute. Hello, what? Yeah? Like on this phone? Through your number? Sure, I'll do that. Okay. All right, and I'm going to listen on the phone then. When I did Ustream, I didn't get the meeting. And if I can't do Ustream and be on the Zoom at the same time. So I'll call in and leave the Zoom on. Okay? So Ryan, can the host release the hold so that I can hear on Zoom on the phone? Ryan? Yeah? I can't be on Zoom and Ustream at the same time. Okay, so I can be on the phone, or I can be on the phone on Zoom and on the Zoom picture, or I can be on Ustream and the phone to talk. Well, I was let in on the, I thought I'd do the Zoom on the call. I mean, he's got me muted on my phone on the screen. But I'm assuming that if he unmutes me and lets me in, I'll be able to listen to everything that's said at the council meeting. The only alternative is for me to come. But I'm showing on the Zoom, so I could, if he releases the, if he unmutes me and lets me in, I can listen and participate by phone. Mayor? What's up? We need to have a record of the meeting if at all possible. You can't record the meeting now? I'm not the only one? Do we have any backup recording device, like a handheld machine? Well, I really think we need to have a record of the meeting in some form or fashion. I mean, the Open Meetings Act waiver does not allow us to have a meeting without a recorded record, at least until we have minutes. They didn't, I don't think his modification of the Open Meetings Act went that far. So if we can't solve that problem, we can't have the meeting. We'll just have to have the special meeting next week as well we'll have. And we'll use the same agenda, and then if we can't get the zoning thing done, we just have another special meeting, or devote part of the regular July meeting to the zoning thing. I mean, we don't have anything on the agenda tonight that's an emergency, other than we've got to act on that interlocal agreement by June 30th. Okay. All right, I'm gonna, you know, stay, I don't know what's gonna happen when I hang up. I think I'll come back to Zoom, and maybe, you know, maybe when I do that, I'll be able to hear what's going on at the council. Let me do that, and if I can do that, I'll try and get word to Ryan, to get word to you or Ryan somehow. All right, thanks.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press, please enter the meeting password followed by pound. You entered 1-7-2-8-0-4-0. This meeting password is invalid. Please re-enter the meeting password followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. You have been put on hold by the host. Do not listen or talk until the host releases the hold.
Mayor Ryan, can you hear me? Hello? Yes, sir. Just go ahead and announce that you're going back on, and I'll start whatever you want. Yeah, and if there's an echo, let me know. The state and the federal government under the CARES Act created two methodologies for reimbursements to local governments. In counties like Bear County, larger counties of over 500,000 population, the county has the purse strings and acts as a conduit for the funding of dollars for potential reimbursement to local governments. So they have presented an interlocal agreement, which they are asking all of the suburban cities to participate in in order to get access to a reimbursement based upon the 2018 census estimate. So the population of the city of Castle Hills on that estimate is listed on Exhibit A to the proposed interlocal agreement as 4,471, resulting in a potential reimbursement of 245,905 based on $55 per resident per the 2018 census estimate. The reimbursements are for expenditures incurred by the city for costs related to the dealing with the coronavirus COVID-19 circumstances. It does include possibility of reimbursement for payroll costs for the city's emergency management director expenditures for things the city manager or staff have acquired to alleviate COVID-19. The easy one is hand sanitizer. But if you bought Plexiglas for partitioning, if you have needed to do other things, those things, there are reimbursements for. And the county has set a deadline of June 30 for delivery of the acceptance of the interlocal agreement, which would be evidenced by adoption of Resolution 2020-0617 and the transmittal material, which I don't know, Mr. Rathley included the transmittal email. They came from Governor Wolf, County Judge Wolf's office, but it used the term "non-negotiable." And in light of the fact that we would very much like to have access to these funds to help alleviate the extra costs incurred by the city and can get reimbursement for them, it is my recommendation that the council adopt Resolution 2020-0617. Two other cities where I am city attorney acted at their respective meetings on Thursday of last week to enter into this agreement. And I believe other of the suburban cities are doing the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I believe we have a motion from, or we have a, Mr. May? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. May, seconded by Mr. Gregory in front of the discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Moving on to item number two. Question of possible action on requiring anyone entering City Hall unless using a facial mask until further action by the governing body, Mr. Gregory.
Providing state department public over in the main. Certainly not a thing. But in some business, I believe, very many everybody, sir. But alive with hope. Require funding of this all working here. 15 where man all time.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Ryan Brand. Can we have any discussion? Mr. Paul?
No, I could barely hear Mr. Paul's comments. It was very muffled, and I could hear some of the words. The gist of what I think I heard at the end was something along the lines of if the city passes this ordinance, will it be in conflict with the governor? Was that anywhere close to what Mr. Paul was asking? Okay. The governor's statement, the governor's executive order encourages people to wear face masks. It does say that a governmental entity cannot impose a civil or criminal penalty if a citizen chooses not to wear a face mask. But Governor Judge Wolf's order, which is in effect as we sit here, because it became effective at 12:01 PM today, requires all commercial entities in Bear County providing goods or services directly to the public to develop and implement a health and safety policy which at a minimum must require that all employees or visitors to the commercial entity's business premises or other facilities wear face coverings when in an area performing an activity which will necessarily involve close contact or proximity to coworkers or the public where six feet of separation is not feasible. We may not be, as a city, a commercial entity, but we have an opportunity as a governmental entity to show leadership and set an example for those people, and I hope Mr. Gregory is one of them, who signed the online petition asking HEB to require all its customers to wear facial coverings. We're going to need, I think, we have a policy that Mr. Rathley has put together. This would be an extension of that policy. But wearing of facial masks is a public safety issue. There was an online headline on the Express News website this afternoon that the governor was not going to object to Judge Wolf's order. And that order doesn't impose a fine, not on someone who fails to wear a mask, but a fine on a commercial entity which fails to develop and implement a health and safety policy. If we enter an order that is along the lines of what I understand Mr. Gregory's request, that is an order, it wouldn't be a resolution, it wouldn't be really an ordinance, it's just action by the governing body that says that until further action by the governing body, anyone entering City Hall must wear a facial mask. I do not think that that contradicts the governor's order, because it does not provide a penalty to someone who fails to do so. We just need a policy, is what the judge is saying. And the judge is saying that policy must include wearing a face mask when you can't do proper social distancing. We have employees who work in close proximity. We have implemented a policy that I believe is still in effect, that every employee reports to the fire department to have their temperature taken before coming to, going into their workspace. The judge refers in his order of today to certain policies concerning access to the Justice Center and complex downtown. The Office of Court Administration required the court system of Bear County to develop a plan for reopening of the courts. And the county's policy, which needed approval by that Office of Court Administration, includes a statement that anyone trying to enter the Bear County courthouse will have their temperature taken. Entry will be denied if the temperature is over 100, and provides also for the wearing of masks. You know, I do think that a motion consistent with this agenda item would be appropriate if council as a whole is uncomfortable with a blanket rule that everyone has to wear a face mask at all times. That, and for the comfort of employees, that there may be a period of time when the employee is alone in their own workspace, that they do not have to have a face covering on. That might be something to consider, just out of consideration for employees who can work in office isolation. But face masks don't really protect the person wearing the face mask. They protect the people who the wearer of the face mask comes in contact with. And I wear a face mask when I leave my private office at my law firm, based on our policy. And so do every other employee in my firm. And we do that to protect each other. And I think the city taking that action, as I said earlier, is a sign of leadership in terms of doing our part to limit the spread of this disease. Well, to be consistent with Judge Wolf's order, it would be that any employee or visitor to city premises wear a face covering when in an area or performing an activity which involves close contact or proximity to coworkers or the public, and where six feet of separation is not feasible. There are certainly others who would say that that a six-foot distance is not necessarily a safe distance. But I'm trying to balance the needs of our employees with the needs of the public. One of the things that the city, I think, has done an excellent job of during this pandemic is is making city services available online through the website, by email, so that, you know, the public and contractors are still able to conduct business with the city, albeit remotely. If, as and when City Hall is reopened to the public, having some policy would be consistent with the judge's order. And the council has the opportunity to decide whether to have that policy have an exception whereby if you're, you know, able to practice social distancing, the wearing of the mask is not mandatory. But the council could, I think, adopt the motion that I think Mr. Gregory made at the onset of this discussion. If you're able to record the meeting and if any one member of the public is able to participate in the meeting, you can proceed. It's going to be a little bit more challenging for Mr. Rafferty and I. I do see on Zoom Mr. McCormick's name. I don't know if Mr. McCormick is able to hear and speak if he wishes. And so, you know, I think it's important that if Mr. McCormick wishes to participate, it'd be possible for him to do so. And if it is not possible for him to do so, maybe in the same way I am or through Mr. Rafferty's cellphone. You know, that's the problem. The problem is we've told the public that you can participate in our meeting through Zoom. And if Mr. McCormick is unable to hear or is unable to be heard by the governing body, that presents a problem. I mean, it might be that you could unmute Mr. McCormick and see if he can speak and hear.
I can hear Mr. Schnau quite clearly. It's a little bit more difficult to hear members of the council or the mayor, but I am able to understand them. Could you understand? Can you hear me? Okay, I understand Mr. Schnau just fine. It's more difficult to understand members of the council. Or are you, Mr. Mayor? I think it might help if everybody made it a point to get a little closer to that microphone when you're speaking.
Far in the background, the zoning committee was appointed in September of 2015. The committee was charged and honored to review the entire zone and also would cast and considering several areas specifically identified by then the city manager, including solar energy facilities, mixed-use zones, planning unit development and home modifications. The proposed provisions recommended by the zoning committee were presented to the then-city manager in 2016. Previous and current zoning commissions have made additional amendments as well.
Mr. Schnau, can you chime in now? I could barely hear Mr. Rafferty. Was that just reading the first page of the PowerPoint? Okay. Well, interestingly, when the mayor's was not muted, I could hear Mr. Rafferty on the Zoom as I could hear Mr. McCormick on the Zoom. And I'm assuming you can hear me now. If someone could give me a thumbs up or something on the screen to tell me you can hear me, that would help.
Yes, sir. I'm looping you in on my iPad so you can hear us, that's why.
Okay, well, that's great. You know, where are we, though, in the discussion? I heard you open and close the public hearing. I heard Mr. McCormick make a comment requesting folks speak closer to their microphones. And then I heard you close the public hearing, but I really could not hear what Mr. Rafferty said because that microphone, I couldn't hear off either of my systems what he said. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry that we couldn't get this to work.